Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Boyer.
Here.
Mr. Colang.
Here.
Ms. Norek.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Sermon.
Here.
Chairman Duffy.
Present. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4.1 of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3.1 of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on June 12th. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it, rather than a simple majority of four. There's one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Ordinarily, this board consists of seven members. Tonight, however, due to an absence, there are only six members present. Ms. Roberts, as Assistant Director of Community Development, sits with us tonight in an advisory capacity only and is not a voting member of the board. Please be aware, therefore, that a vote of three to three will technically go into the record as a negative recommendation with the legal effect that I have previously described. In recognition of this unusual feature of our procedure, when we do not have all members of the board present on a given evening, we give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is June 6th. There's no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the pre-printed agenda located on the table near the door where you first came in. When your case is called, please proceed to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of the board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from village staff these green booklets containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondences that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the podium to others who wish to speak either for or against the application. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceeding will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you're here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask that you raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you are about to give? If so, please say "I do." Thank you. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first case of the evening?
First case is 2018 Z-22, 444 Skokie Boulevard. For anyone who was attending tonight to hear this case, the applicant has withdrawn their request and there's an email at your places. So that case is not going forward, won't be heard, no action is necessary from the board.
Excellent.
Our next case is 2018 Z-18, 34 Canterbury Court. This is a revised request for a one-foot fence height variation to permit the replacement of a 7.5-foot tall solid fence in a side yard and a rear yard.
Hi, welcome.
Good evening. I am Deirdre Toner, landscape architect, representing Merrill Lee and Richard Redmond from 34 Canterbury Court. And we are requesting a one-foot variance to the existing fence that has an average height of seven foot three right now. So our overall finished height would be seven foot five. We're also requesting to put a retaining wall one foot in from the property line. It would actually start 16 inches in from the property line because it's going to be on a spread footing, as the diagram notates. And that would be two foot six inches high, and then the fence would be along the top of that. And the reasons that we are requesting this variation is the existing fence is very old and decrepit, and the house next door, there is a very 13-foot grade change from the old carriage drive that goes down into this existing house, which is a carriage, and the water rushes down. And that is the front side area that the Redmonds have for a patio. That's their really only outdoor space. So we have a drainage, channel drain that will be on the outside of the retaining wall, but on our client's property. So it will be well within the 12 inches or the one foot. And that's going to take care of quite a bit of the water and hold the water, and then we have that connecting into our drainage system. So.
So I do have a question. Your diagram on 1.10, it shows a two-foot six-inch retaining wall with the fence on top.
Uh huh.
But having been at the site, the northwest corner of the site, there's about roughly 12, 16 feet of retaining wall existing, and then the ground slopes up from there, and there is no retaining wall. So are you digging out that whole area, that whole, all the way to the little gate that's at the end of the existing fence?
Yes, the existing little estate fence, that open fence. We're going to create a retaining wall that goes all the way across. We're going to dig that out so it levels out the grade. And then the fence will be attached onto the top of that, and it will be supported with steel poles to correct any variation.
So the, one of the, I'm sure you heard the story. Two weeks ago, it was presented, and, you know, it was an eight-and-a-half-foot fence height request. But what we found while we went out there is maybe the peak at the highest point, it was maybe about eight feet. So that's all you're reaching is eight feet in height from the, if we go to the northwest corner and measure from that point to the top of the fence, right?
Actually, we are requesting an overall height of seven foot five. So we're only requesting one foot. Right now, the average height, based on the eight measurements that we took along that fence line from the grade up, the average height was seven foot three and a half. And so from the south to the north, it'll be across the top, seven and a half feet.
So in the north end, are you going to fill in the area that now steps down?
Yes. We're not filling it in. There's still going to be steps down, but that retaining wall will actually be a little bit lower there. It's about, there's about a one foot, so that retaining wall will be 30 inches high, or it will be, from the grade steps down there, one foot between that area.
So instead of 30 inches at the far north end, it might be 42 inches?
No, it won't be 42. It would be, there's a, the two steps up would be 30, 36, and then another six to go up to that other foot.
So as I, I went and I measured, and Mr. Sermon had measured as well, and in the packet, there's a picture of what I had measured. It's just under eight feet. So we're assuming that because the fence deteriorated, that at one point in time, at that northwest corner, it was about eight feet high. You're not exceeding that height?
No.
But I do have a question. I need clarification on 1.6. So it says the overall fence height is eight foot six, which is the retaining wall plus what seems to be the fence. So is this inaccurate? We want seven and a, you're asking for seven and a half. Is that?
Mr. Boyer, I mean, Ms. Roberts?
That's the submission from the last meeting. 1.10 is the new material.
Got it. All right, so I, right, got it. So 1.10 is really the only diagram that we're working off of? Okay.
So that would clear up my confusion.
I had to make a phone call this afternoon regarding that.
If you could put 1.10 on the screen, if you could pull that out on the side.
Keep pulling, it'll come further out. There you go.
And put 1.10.
Do you have this diagram?
Uh, yes, I do. Is that the?
Okay, can you rotate it? There you go.
Yeah, so the top, the top diagram, go, drop it a bit.
There you go.
Yeah, so from, from the south.
Which is here.
Yes.
Yes. That south point, the southern point of the fence to the northern point, could you give us the height of the fence, starting with the south end?
Existing now?
No, no, what it will be.
It will be seven foot six inches.
And then?
There'll be a 30-inch retaining wall.
I got it, but, so it starts at seven foot six on the south end?
Right. And it will end at seven foot six on the north end as well.
How does that work?
So you put on your diagram, you're saying it's six foot eight to 711.
Those are existing heights?
I apologize.
We went back and we did all the measurements along there to show that kind of catterwampy variation. And then along the way, over time, different residents have masked other things in there to retain the water. So they've put that limestone in there and done different things. So the idea was to really just correct the problem once and for all and to build that, excuse me, retaining wall one foot off the
Right.
...property line, 30 inches high, and then with the five-foot fence on top. So the overall height would be seven foot and a half, all the way across. So it would really look like the lower diagram here.
Right.
That would be the view that you would see.
The view from which side?
From, that would be the view from the Redmond's side, from the east to the west.
But if you look at the section, the top section, that's not the same view. That's the view from the east to the west.
But that's, that's existing.
That's the existing. We wanted to show the existing site conditions.
Yeah, so what are you doing? I guess the confusion for us is what's being done at the north end to be able to level it out? Because on the drawing, it appears that it's a foot lower or more.
The retaining wall is going to be, will drop down to hit the existing grade.
So it will be taller there?
So it will be, will be completely 30 inches.
Level, but you'll, it'll be deeper at that end?
Right, exactly.
So, okay.
Because it drops down from, let's see, 607 at that north end is the grade, and then it goes up to 608, 608.4, and then at the south end, it's 609. So there's actually, you know, a two-foot grade change. So the retaining wall will even out that grade change.
And where does, where does the drain tile terminate?
The drain tile will be pulled into the west side. We have a gravel walkway on the west side of the house, and we have a six-inch PVC drain tile that pulls out to the front. So it will connect with that. And the
When you say front, is it above ground, or is it?
Yeah, it's a, it bubbles out at the edge of the front yard.
Pop-up drain?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the drain tile is what we call a channel drain, and I'm sure you've heard of that, and perforated, set in gravel with a sock so that it can take on water and then slowly move and disperse water. So hopefully, we'll be, we'll be taking care of the problem for the north resident as well and the existing resident behind us, because right now, that water just flows down and goes into their backyard. They have like a little pool there.
Yeah, it goes both sides of the house right now.
Yeah.
Because you can see the runout that runs to the south also, from the west side of the subject property.
So the view from the west to the fence as proposed?
Mm-hmm.
What would be the height of that fence if looked at from the west, on the north side?
It would be from the, looking from the west to the east, it would be seven foot six inches high.
Above, seven foot six, above grade?
Above grade.
Because it's lower on the west side right now than it is on the east side. Because if you, if you look, you can see the top of the garage that's at the south end in these photos. So it's, it's at least equal to or lower than?
And right now, what they have there is, they have some antique water jugs, ceramic water jugs that they have there that kind of move the water away and help it to pool so that it's not, you know, going further underneath the fence. It will be a solid cedar fence, and it's going to be smooth cedar with a one-and-a-half foot topper. So there will be a nice decorative element to it, so it's not going to be totally solid at seven and a half feet. And it will be stained a gray color, so it'll be nicely maintained. It'll be very pleasant to look at, because that's what the, basically what the Redmonds see looking out of their living room.
Mm-hmm.
From that patio.
Last question. I don't know if this is possible to answer, but when you did make the measurements for the overall existing conditions, and you measured up to the top of the picket, a lot of these pickets are worn, so
Oh, yeah.
Did you, I don't know if it's possible, again, to answer this question, but when you measured the top, were you measuring to the highest, best-condition pickets? Do you remember?
Well, if you look
How did you make that measurement?
Let me just show you. If you look on all of these little measurements, whatever that picket was in there was where we took the measurement.
But that's actually at a point, okay.
And we took eight measurements across that footage, so that we got some of the high ones, some of the low ones, because they do, you know.
Right, okay.
Because we wanted to really get a good average.
Any other questions? No? We're all good? All right. I assume you've given us everything that you want to present.
Yes.
I'm going to see, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? Seeing no one rushing up, I'm going to close the evidence in the case and ask if there's a member, thank you, Mr. Boyer, who's just going to make a motion for us.
Go ahead. You. All right. In regards to case number 2018 Z-18, I move to recommend granting a revised request for a one-foot fence in a side yard and a rear yard, one-foot side, one-foot high fence variation. I'm just winging this, missing some language here. One-foot fence height variation in a side yard and a rear yard 30, at 34 Canterbury Court in accordance with the plans submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Sermon, second. Mr. Boyer, your motion.
There's a couple of things that I've noticed on this. One, I think, I can look at the hardship on this, is the topography of the land. There is a water issue. I do believe that this project corrects that, makes the condition much better. But also, the request is fairly minimal. The revised request really is almost the existing condition. The fence is old, there's, you know, measurements of an old-weathered fence, so they are extremely close to what they're asking for in the average height, and I think it's a nominal request. Again, I think it meets all the standards of review, and the hardship is really the topography of the land.
Thank you. Mr. Sermon?
I agree. It really is, you know, after being revised and confirmed, you know, I can support it now.
Any other comments?
How would you say it? It is an odd section of land. In the beacon last week, they had a picture, when there was just the one house, the estate on it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and so obviously, at one point in time, it was one big estate, and then it got carved up into all these lots, and because of the downward sloping towards the lake, obviously, there's going to be water issues. The intent is to leave the fence at the same height, put in a retaining wall to block water. I think, you know, the drawings and everything show it's going to be a much better-looking fence than the one you have today. So I think it's a nominal request, and because of the topography and what have you, I think something that needs to be done, and I can support it.
Thank you. Any other comments? No? No? All right, I, you know, I too, I, we had this meeting two weeks ago, and I think we came away from it with, you know, as long as you request to replace the existing height of the fence, that we were all going to pretty much be in favor of this. So we appreciate the extra effort to, you know, present us with new plans that kind of match that criteria that we set on you. So I think this meets our standards of review as well. Why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Colang?
Yes.
Ms. Norek?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes yes as well. So that's going to go as a positive recommendation to the village board. Meeting's on the 12th. Phew, 12th. Could I ask that you come up and sign this letter? It just acknowledges your, the dates that we have and your presence. So thank you very much. I've seen
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018 Z-18.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Norek. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Ms. Roberts, when you're ready.
Our next case is 2018 Z-20, 1601 Elwood Avenue. This is a request for a 2.34-foot front yard stoop setback variation and a 6.51-foot front yard stair setback variation to permit the installation of a new stoop and steps on the legal non-conforming structure.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Lance Klein from 1601 Elwood in Willmet. We're just really simply tearing down the old stairs, building new stairs, but facing them forwards and set us sideways.
Yep. So can you explain the difference between the existing conditions and the proposed porch that you're, or deck that you're going to put in front? Not necessarily the orientation, because we understand that you're trying to move the stairs to point out from the house as opposed to the side street, but as far as just footprint of what is existing and being replaced by what?
Well, the existing is quite a bit larger than what we're proposing, because it has like two decks, one high, one low, with stairs connecting them. And then what we're doing, we're proposing is just the standard three-foot wide, or three-foot deep and like six-foot wide stoop, and then just stairs.
So just a three-by-six landing kind of in front of the front door with stairs that lead up to it? Okay. Do we have any other questions for our applicant?
Are you doing this just to make access easier?
Uh, no, I mean, the stairs that are there don't look very good. They're kind of old, and we don't like the style of them, so we just decided to tear them down and rebuild them. We thought, well, if we're rebuilding them, we'd rather have them look like the other houses on the street, which all just go straight out. So we just said, what's a standard, you know, to code staircase, and that includes the three-foot stoop and the stairs? So we're just trying to build it like an everyday, average staircase.
Yeah, so, you know, when I looked at this, I, as I drove by the house, my thought was, okay, it's odd you've got the enclosed front porch, and I was that originally, an open front porch that somebody at some time enclosed, and then somebody put on this deck in the front, which it seems like that's what happened. Obviously, you didn't do it, it's
Yeah, it's pretty old, because we can tell that the windows match the age of the other windows in the house, so that it must be pretty old.
Yeah.
Is that conditioned space, the front porch?
Uh, no, it's, it's un-air-conditioned, un-warm, unheated.
All right, any other questions for our applicant about this?
Nope.
Yeah, this one was not too difficult. All right, do I, well, let me first see if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? All right, seeing nobody rushing forward, sir, remember, thank you, Mr. Colang.
Move to recommend granting a request for a 2.34-foot front yard stoop setback variation and a 6.51-foot front yard setback variation to permit the installation of a new stoop and steps on the legal non-conforming structure at 1601 Elwood Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, no.
Sorry.
Mr. Schneider, second.
Yeah, I think this request basically remedies a situation that was put in place. It's a very nominal request. It kind of orienters stairs the same way as everybody else on the block. There's no excessive width or whatever to it, so I think it meets the standards of review, and I can support it.
Yeah. Mr. Schneider?
I happen to speak to your neighbor to the west while I was stopped there, and he has no objection at all. He says you're nice people. So I have
You sound surprised.
I have, I have no objection to this. I can support it.
Any other comments?
I have nothing for it. I can support it.
Yeah. Yeah, the other thing that kind of goes in your favor, and it's really nominal, is you're changing the sidewalk as well, right? You're eliminating some of the front yard impervious surface area. So, not that that's an issue here, but it's a nominal change. So I too think this meets the standards of review and will support it.
Mr. Colang?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Norek?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes yes as well. So that's going to go as a positive recommendation to the village board. Meeting's on June 12th. If you want to go, you can go, but it's going to be on their consent agenda, so it'll be a quick vote at the beginning of the meeting. If I could have you come up and sign this, Mr. Klein, and take one of them with you, sign the other for us. I thank you very much for your time on this.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018 Z-20.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sermon, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Once your case is heard, you're welcome to leave, so you don't have to listen to us babble on about things if you don't care to.
But you're welcome to.
But you're welcome to stay. We love having an audience. We all think we're characters here, so. All right, well, I think I'm entertaining. I'm sorry. Shouldn't impose my thoughts on everybody.
Thank you. No, no worries.
When you're ready.
Our next case is 2018 Z-24, 617 Linden Avenue. This is a request for a 1.56-foot west side yard setback variation and a 6.49-foot combined side yard setback variation to permit the construction of a second-story addition on the legal non-conforming structure.
Hi, welcome.
Hi.
Welcome back, I should say.
Yes, well, we're here again.
It's good to see you again. You haven't changed much since we saw you last year.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here again. My name's Mark Anderson, architect for 617 Linden with Zen Bishop Justin Hood, the owners. As you mentioned, yes, we were here a year ago. We requested at that time a area increase variance as well as a side yard setback variance. We have an existing one-and-a-half-story home that we wanted to do a full second-floor addition to. At that time, both of those were approved. And just to kind of recap that really quickly, we, two hardships were noted at that time. One, our lot's very narrow, we're only 35 feet wide. Our neighboring properties are 40 and 70, and another property just down the block is 100 feet, so we're by far the narrowest on the block. And secondly, really, our house was built about 80 years ago, three and a half feet from the property line at that time, which is what the variance we're requesting now. And just the financial difficulty of bringing the house into compliance would be, effectively, we'd have to tear it down and build new. So that wasn't really reasonable. So after we were approved for this last time, life kind of happened, and we put the project on hold for a little while to deal with that. We came back to it about nine months later, and with fresh eyes, and you know, this west elevation doesn't, it's very monotonous, it's very boring, it doesn't really present well. It's visible as you drive down the street, the property to the west side, on that same side is 20 feet away. So you can see this elevation as you drive by. And so we, you know, really need some sort of material break. It needs something to make it a little more interesting. So we provided or added the two stucco, they don't stick out, they look like they might. So we tried to show that they, they're in fact in line with the existing, or the, will be the board and batten siding. And then we also added the little baby dormers. They're only three feet above the existing roof line. They don't provide any actual usable space, but they do provide interest so that the roof line isn't straight. It's not a 50 feet of the exact same siding with a couple of kind of randomly placed windows, they look like. So it was a way to organize the facade, to make it more interesting, to make it, just when you drive by, you don't, you look at it and say, oh, that's nice, that's big haird. So that's, and I guess I'd also add that, you know, we understand the value of this process, that we're coming back through this again. We made changes to the design, and it's appropriate for the neighbors to know what we're doing, so nobody feels like we did a little bait and switch on them. So we, we think this is totally reasonable, and it's just in case anybody had interest. So yeah, we're again asking for the side yard setback.
So it's really, the only thing that's changed is you're adding these little dormers that are not changing any floor area ratio, they're not changing a setback issues, they're not changing anything from your request before. It's really a design element, but you had to come in because it's significant enough of a change of design that it needs reappraisal.
Could you put 1.18 just for everyone to...
I'm sorry?
You put page 1.18 on the screen so that we're all...
1.18?
1.18.
The new one?
Yeah.
The drawing. So we're all understand what you asked. So that's the change you're making.
Yeah, it's really those two pieces.
So off of this diagram I'm looking at, looks like the original at 1.8. This is the west elevation. So there was two windows.
1.8?
Yeah, one, actually 1.8. Yeah, the original? That one, the west elevation. 1.8.
Trying to get there, Mike. Got it.
So just...
So that, yeah, there you go.
So, so there's that longer window? That's being totally eliminated, obviously, because it's not on the new, to the right. There's a longer, was that a window?
Yeah, that was a window. It's now being, sorry.
So that's incorporated into the dormers. What about the two windows on the ground level, the first floor level?
Those have been eliminated.
Those are eliminated as well?
Yeah, two of the windows on the second floor are really aesthetic. They're not, they're, I've been calling them faux windows. They don't, you can't actually see through them. They're, on the exterior, they look like windows, but there's not a window on the inside. It's an aesthetic.
In the dormer?
No, no, in the original design, right?
In the original design.
No, in the new design.
The new design.
New design, there's faux windows.
Yeah, so you could kind of see how three of the windows match up exactly with the new one, or with, from the old to the new.
Right.
So that one's with there, that one's, so the, this one is also real, and this one is the faux window, and that one's a faux window.
Okay, so any complaint that the neighbor might have, which would be, there's more windows facing my living space, they're faux windows?
Yeah, perhaps.
So there's no additional viewing of the neighbor?
No, no. Right. Fair enough, that's a good question, though.
Any other questions for our applicant? No, 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 no. If you, I'd need you to come up to speak.
We do have, just as we, was dropped in their mailbox today, one of their neighbors left a note that says, "Looks good to me, thanks for sharing, good luck." I don't know if you want that.
We have, we have something from a neighbor on, where's the address here? Lived at 700 Linden, who's in support of it as well.
Okay, this is 1350 Aitkinsville. Do you want this, or?
Lisa, do we want it? Yes, Lisa wants it.
Thank you.
And actually, if you'd like to see, we have some, we're very proud of our full color renders.
Yeah, let's see, yeah, let's see how it's really going to look. Black and white doesn't do it justice.
There we go, so, actually, if you want to, so this is the existing home. Front view, side view, and then our new home, the front view, and the side view. And you can see what we were looking to do with the dormers there, just give it a little bit of an appeal.
Right, break it up, yeah.
Because it's so exposed on that side, we just wanted to make sure that we had good sort of street view from both ends.
And it's a visible view.
Right, yeah, it's nice. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody in the audience who would, do you either speak for or against this case? I don't see anyone, all right. I'm going to ask if there's a member of the board. Thank you, Mr. Sermon. I'm just going to make a motion.
I move to recommend granting a request for a 1.56 west yard setback variation and a 6.49 combined yard setback variation to permit the construction of a second story addition on the legal non-conforming structure at 617 Linden Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
Do I have a second? Mr. Boyer, second. Mr. Sermon, your motion?
It's a, you know, I liked the design originally when you submitted last year, but I agree this is an improvement architecturally, and it's a very minimal request, just to have the dormers. Since it's not affecting the FAR, it really is a straightforward request, so I can support it. Mr. Boyer?
I supported this originally, from the original design. I think the hardships still remain, and as just a design element change, I can totally support it.
Any other comments?
All right, yeah, I too, you know, we were in favor of this as a board the first time through, that really, you're not changing any of your requests as far as side yard setback, combined yard, side yard setback, because they're existing conditions, the way the house is sited on the lot. So by going up to a second story, you're still then in that side yard, combined side yard setback. So it would be difficult to have the second floor not match up with the first floor. So I too will support this.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Ms. Norek?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider? Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes yes as well, so it's going to go as a positive recommendation to the village board. Meeting's on June 12th. It'll be on the consent agenda unless someone pulls it off the consent agenda to discuss, which I doubt they will. Thank you for coming up to sign one of these for me. Do I have a member who would move to authorize?
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018Z24.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Coling, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well.
Our next case is...
Yeah.
2018Z21, 1428 Willmet Avenue. This is a request for a two foot side yard garage setback variation and a 188.5 square foot rear yard pavement impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a detached two-car garage.
Welcome. I'm Jason Reiner from 1428 Willmet Avenue. My wife and I purchased this building a little over a year ago. Did a, it was pretty bad condition when we bought it, dilapidated, yellow building. We gut rehabbed it, made it into two, it's a two flat, made it into two really nice living units. We've got two families moving in there, both with children between the ages of six and three. They moved there for Mackenzie, and we have a dilapidated one-car garage. So we've got, you know, families unloading minivans, not even in front of the house, because there's a, what's it called, a crosswalk and a hydrant right there. So we have no parking in front or anything. So we're just looking to put in a two-car garage. We have a 250-plus foot irregular lot that the early wine park has some, at one point in history, took a good chunk of the lot. So we're only 14 feet at the alley. So our only option is to bring the garage into this useless backyard. The garage is, I mean, the yard is, it goes from 14 feet to about 26 feet for a good 100 feet of it.
So I kind of was, you know, interested in the, you know, insulation hanging out from the garage. I thought it was just really kind of a unique touch that wasn't designed.
Did you like that?
Vintage garage.
It's a vintage garage. Maybe it's worth something.
That actually, the previous owner finished the garage, so it's not even a garage. It's drywalled with insulation inside.
That's now hanging out.
But there are, there is a family of skunks that live in there as well.
Are you collecting any rent from that?
Not currently.
No, no. All right, so really, the idea is here that you've got to move it, you know, it was unclear to me on the drawing, how far from the alley? Currently, it's about 40 feet from the alley.
It's about 40 feet, yeah.
So where does it end up?
It's going to end up about 100 feet from the alley to the garage door, and then another 22 feet to the back of the garage.
Right, so, and that 100 feet roughly gives, finally gives you enough width of the lot to fit the 20-foot garage, 20-foot width of garage in there, giving you some space on either side.
Yeah, where we're planning on putting the garage, it's, the front is about right under 28 feet. So it leaves us the 20-foot garage and more than three feet on each side. So that's why we put it so far back in the yard, so we'd have, because the west property line? Kind of unsure of, because the fence is, according to the survey, the fence is in the park. We don't know where the park's property line really is. I believe the park owns that fence. I'm not sure. So we wanted to, we didn't want to go 26 feet, wanted to go 28, just in case, because we don't know.
Where you at, yeah?
Yeah.
So you have more than three feet, if that's just to the lot line, you have more than three feet to the fence.
We do. We've got a roughly, well, to the fence, we've got about five on that side, but we're guessing about a foot of that's not ours.
Right, because, right.
Correct, yes.
So you have enough, my only concern was that you wouldn't have enough room to bring anything, but you do have, you have room on either side, because three feet.
But you, there'll be a door, I'm sure, on the north or south end of the garage, right? Like a man door to bring stuff in and out of?
Yes, yes, on the south side.
I'm talking about large, I mean, three feet, right? If you want to bring anything larger, any equipment, right? You'd have a...
Oh, you mean past the garage?
Right.
But, well, I mean, they could go through the garage to the main door, the service door.
They can have a secondary access door?
Right, that's...
Yes, yeah.
Like a secondary roll-up?
Right, the, no, no, just a regular 30-inch, 36-inch door.
They could access it from the front yard, because that...
We do have a big side yard in the front.
Currently, there's something on the...
That shed is not the long door.
Shed's not there, you know.
Piece of equipment, right? A backhoe, right?
He's got five feet, he could, well, he could take through the park, take down some of their... No.
You know, I mean, in theory, we would be able to access it from both ways. We could come in from the front if we needed to get some sort of machinery through there.
And then on the plans, I didn't see, there was mention of it, but I didn't see anything on the elevations of downspouts and gutters. Where's, how are you going to gutter this? Because my concern would be where the treatment of water?
The downspouts are going to go on the, on the north side, so down the driveway. And then the driveway will be pitched towards the alley, on the long driveway.
Okay.
It's got 100 feet to travel.
So this is R2, so you are permitted to have two rental units here, is that...
I hope so, no. Yeah, it was previously, I mean, actually, it was a grocery store at one point in history, but it's previously a two-flat, so they, they let us basically redo it to, to the two unit. But yes, it's got two meters to everything.
Is your height going to be high enough for minivans or the big SUVs to get in and out of there?
It should be, it's a, they said it was a, Chicagoland builder said it's a standard-sized garage door.
I know, but a standard-sized garage can't fit the bigger...
Bigger ones?
Yeah, so, partly the reason you're building it is because of the tenants that are moving in?
Well, to give them at least each one garage spot, yeah.
It also, I mean, it has the...
Have the height for it.
It's close.
But you know what else? They've got 100 feet from the alley.
They do have a ton of your driveway.
Yeah, but I don't know, the two cars, one car can get past the other one.
Well, it's going to be, for the first, I believe, 20 or 25 feet at the garage. It will be a two lane, and then it will drop down to one lane.
Just mentioning that they're not having, having, be able to use it because they can't fit their cars into it, so...
To this request, but I'm just curious, are the two units rented currently?
Yes.
Any other questions for our applicant? No, 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 no. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? Nope, all right. I'm going to ask if there's a member of the board who'd like to make the motion here. Thank you, Mr. Coling. Mr. Reiner, you can have a seat.
Oh, thank you.
Move to recommend granting a request for a two-foot side yard garage setback variation and 188.5 square foot, 26.74% rear yard pavement impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a detached two garage, two-car garage at 1428 Willmet Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted. Yeah, I think this is one of the...
I need a second on the motion, sorry, Mr....
Second.
Mr. Schneider, second. Sorry, Mr. Coling, go ahead.
This is, I think, one of the stranger-shaped lots we've seen here. Obviously, the village is in favor of having two-car garages. The only way for you to accomplish this is to move it up, you know, as far south as you are doing in order to fit that. Obviously, it does create an impervious surface issue, but I think you have a definite hardship with the shape of your lot. So I think it meets the standards of review, and I can support it.
Mr. Schneider?
I also agree, this is the most unusual lot I've come across in a while. We don't have any, any guidelines for doing less impervious surface in constructing driveways, and I wish we had, and we could apply them in this case. But given that we don't, and you have to have a driveway to get to the garage, I have no objection.
You know, if I, I'm going to jump into that, and Lisa, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one of the reasons that they have the impervious surface coverage variation issue is because the width of the lot in the rear yard is only 14 feet wide, and to put a 10-foot wide driveway, it doesn't matter, you're going to run into an impervious surface coverage ratio, or variation request because of the ratio that happens, yeah?
Yeah.
Did that make sense?
Unless you...
43 at the front.
Unless you do impervious pavement.
Yeah.
Unless you do, yeah, impervious papers, but we're not going to ask them to do...
43 at the front and 14 at the back is...
Yeah, 14 feet wide, and you've got a 10-foot wide yard.
250 feet long is a very...
Any other comments? No, all right. I too, I can support this as well, as stated by my colleagues here. It's a unique lot, and, you know, we commend you on your rehab job. The building looks great as you drive by it. I remember when it was, I was always curious what was going on in that building. So I think this meets our standards of review. I think we touched on why it's impervious surface issue. The setbacks make sense because you just have to, you got it to a point where you could fit it. Otherwise, I mean, to give you really where you need to be, you'd be almost to the house to have the width to fit the garage there, so. I support, I think it meets our standards of review.
When you're ready?
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Norek?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Sturman?
Yes.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes yes as well, so it's going to go as a positive recommendation to the village board, meeting's on June twelfth. Um, it's going to be on the consent agenda, you know, but I, you might as well come, see how it works out. I doubt anybody's going to ask you any questions, but you might get some comments similar to ours about the uniqueness of the lot, and thanking you for rehabbing a, an older structure, yeah.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendations for the zoning Board of Appeals for case number twenty-eighteen Z twenty-one.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Boyer's second, thank you very much, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Our next case is twenty-eighteen Z twenty-three, five-seventeen Green Bay Road. This is a request for a special use for an arts studio, Codeverse.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you for coming.
This is Shuchi. I'm Chris, we're with Codeverse. We are petitioning, uh, I think we're the only petition here that doesn't involve home improvement, so bear with us. Uh, no yard work here, we are here for the kids. Uh, Codeverse is an interactive coding studio. Uh, we launched our first studio in Lincoln Park about a year ago, and, uh, it was a great success, so we've now looked at expansion to several different suburbs based on the hype and the response we've gotten from Willmet. Uh, we've expedited and moved you guys to the top of the list, so we're looking to make Willmet our second home. To give you a little more context about the studio, uh, it's not just kids with a computer, it's, it's a large investment on our part to redevelop the space, uh, which has been vacant for a couple of years now, and what we want to do is, we create lights and smoke machines, robots, TVs, and it's all programmable using our proprietary language, Kidscript, uh, for ages six to thirteen. So right around the age that kids start learning how to read, uh, we start teaching them the logic, the creativity, and the problem-solving skills. So it's not just the tech side of things, these, these children are presenting their projects at the end of classes, their lessons, uh, they're very excited about them, they have the option to send it via text to their friends and family, uh, that way they can show their parents what they've created, and, uh, it's, it's truly remarkable to see how excited they are to run around the corner, to get their iPad, and start coding with these self-guided lessons, uh, and I'll let Shuchi take it from here.
And just to add to that, um, we work in partnership with a lot of schools and nonprofits, um, because, um, we're actually enhancing what's going on in the classroom, so outside of computer programming and logic, we're teaching physics, typing, spelling, mathematics, um, you know, RGB colors, creativity. So there is the, the app building, the video game aspect, and then there's the robotics piece. Um, so we've found a lot of students who don't do well in school, actually, um, you know, they thrive in this environment, and they benefit in their, you know, regular education because of this. Um, so yeah, we have a, currently, we have a little over three hundred members, and, um, a significant portion of that comes from the North Shore. We have families coming from Morton Grove, um, we have a huge demand from Lake Bluff, but, um, some of our initial families actually came from the Willmet area, which is why we started looking at this area. Um, and the reason why we think, um, you know, when I reviewed the approval of standards, you know, we're family-friendly, we believe that we're going to help increase foot traffic, um, the space has been vacant for about two years, um, hopefully will be a catalyst for additional activity. We have been, um, in the neighborhood that we started out in, in Lincoln Park, um, we've seen more foot traffic, um, because of this. We hope to also add to the, the community goal of, uh, you know, enhancing the, the vibrant, uh, the Village Center area, so we think that we can help enhance that and push those goals forward. Um, we've also worked very closely with the village engineer and with the development, um, with Lisa and, and John, to develop policies to, that will maintain a high level of safety and comfort in the area, and also ensure that, um, we'll have as minimal impact of traffic due to our, um, customers coming in and out of the space.
So I think one of the big, um, I don't know, hurdles or the questions that we have about this is our, our parking requirement here, and I know that, uh, anybody, the, the three people that watch us, um, tonight, although our missing board member might be watching us, um, there's really limited parking on the street right there, um, and the parking that, that does exist along Green Bay Road is on the other side of the street. You do have that side drive, I mean, can you tell us, um, I know that you've got these limited class periods that people are going to be coming and dropping off, what's the size of the classes, what's kind of the rate of people coming and going? So is there an advantage to having that side drive drop-off, or is their drop-off/pickup better out of the rear of the space, drive-through? I mean, could, so could you touch on some of this parking and drop-off/pickup for us?
Definitely. So we, we've developed, um, a drop-off/pickup policy, and as of now, we have six spaces that will be, um, assigned to Codeverse in on-premise, and we're hoping to use those for, um, our trial families. So six of, um, on average, will have a class of twenty families coming in, um, six of them, we expect to be trial families, um, looking at, you know, past data points from Lincoln Park, um, that's exactly what we expect. So they will come in, um, we are going to enforce a staggered, um, drop-off and pickup policy with all parents, um, based on, you know, trial members, they'll come fifteen minutes beforehand, um, and then current members will start arriving ten minutes, um, beforehand, and then, based on the, the age group, um, and, uh, basically, we're going to have the older kids who need a less amount of help come first, and then assign them times accordingly, and same thing with pickup. Um, we've also, uh, developed in this policy that the entrance, they're only allowed to come southbound, it's going to be clearly identified and communicated in this policy and through newsletters and through conversations with parents on an ongoing basis, that they're only allowed to enter into a queue, um, as per the policy, coming southbound on Green Bay Road. It's going to be a one-way driveway, because I know right now, though, there are some concerns that the, the driveway isn't being used as one-way, so people come in and out, um, so we're going to clearly add signage to ensure that everyone knows it's a one-way entrance only. Um, as they go in, we'll have a loading area in the back, and, um, we will clearly identify this as a car line entrance, um, the front entrance will be held for pedestrians, and, um, we are adding a, an incentive, uh, to make sure that, you know, anyone who bikes or takes the Metro, um, or, um, you know, just walks over, will receive a discount on their monthly membership.
So as you have this draw, this drawing, this map up, the drop-off, the, you, you mark loading zone, how, what's the queuing? I mean, is it going to be one or two cars able to drop off/pickup at the same time? Is there going to be staff that's going to, you know, or...
There's going to be staff, um, and based on the way we've broken it out, if there's six, um, that are trial families, we expect about sixteen cars total, so that's, that leaves ten, and then if we stagger according to age group, we expect about three to four every, um, two to three minutes, and we're going to have clear signs, similar to what daycares and schools do, have, um, parents put a sign on their dashboard, so, um, staff will be outside, they'll see them coming in, they'll be able to call in the kid, or, you know, be prepared to help, um, unload the students. It will be a moving queue, so parents won't be allowed to exit their vehicle, which will help speed up the process.
So for all age groups, they won't be able to...
We're not going to allow them to...
So six-year-olds are going to get out of the car?
And so our staff members are going to be out there to assist them, um, just like, uh, daycares typically do this, and staff members are there, they receive the students, walk them to the entrance, make sure they're safely inside, and then attend to the next car, and that's how we expect to keep the car line moving.
May I approach the bench with some copies?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then we've also developed policies on the staff side, um, and checklists to make sure that they're following these policies, um, and we're going to track.
So are you going to stop a car that's northbound that wants to turn left and into the queue?
So we could add additional signage if, if you think that's going to...
Yeah, but somebody coming from Evanston isn't going to want to go around the block, they're just going to want to take a left-hand turn.
I think, you know, similar to most schools, as long as we are making the policy clear and saying, this is allowed, this is not allowed, um, and communicating that, they won't be able to join a car line that way, um, the car line has a queue.
No, they won't, they'll just force their way in. I mean, we see that, I mean, you see that driving all the time, and you're going to be there four to six, uh, during the week, which is very heavy traffic on Green Bay.
I mean, so if we, if we put a clear sign there saying, you know, no, no left turn if you're heading north?
I can tell you, we have a lot of things that come through here that have parking issues.
Right, right.
So would you, what would you recommend we do in that case?
I think it's a tough spot to do what you're looking to do, traffic-wise.
Yeah, when, when, what are the hours, is your class an hour long? Is it...
Seventy-five minutes.
They're seventy-five minutes long, and we...
And there's two classes a day?
Yeah, so we offer, offer after-school classes, Monday through Friday at four o'clock and six o'clock. Um, we know CrossFit's classes are on behalf of the hour, so we're going to help avoid, you know, bringing in clients at the same time.
Have you, have you spoken with CrossFit?
Have them here today, yeah.
I'm assuming you're supporting it?
I am, yeah.
Okay.
What is CrossFit exactly?
CrossFit is in this area right here, they're in this building.
So they take half the spaces, half the parking?
Five of the, yeah, I believe.
I guess, um, I have a question, uh, in reference to what Mr. Coling had said.
Here you go, here's a better look.
Um, and it wouldn't be the usual way to route it, but from a traffic perspective, I don't know if you investigated, you know, with that light at, is that Linden?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right there, you know, if you almost reverse the traffic flow, um, where you went down the alley and entered, then you, then you could exit and just do a right-hand turn, which would seem to impact the traffic less, because Linden, you've got a light then at least to control it, no?
Some people can turn left off, off of, left or right off of Green Bay onto Linden, come up the alley, and then exit out onto Green Bay.
We have our traffic consultant here, who might be able to speak to that.
Yes, Jones left.
Okay. Do, you know, how about, how about we ask, you're the village engineer, right? Why don't, why don't you come up and explain to us if that's a possibility, or why it may not be?
Uh, good evening, Chairman Duffy, members of the board, Dan Manus, village engineer. Uh, we see the, uh, one-way entrance into the site as a benefit, it's, uh, easier movement to make, a safer movement than to make right-hand turns or left-hand turns across traffic coming out of the site. It's also a benefit to the pedestrians using the crosswalk, not having vehicles with that tight blind corner, so it, it makes it a more pedestrian-friendly environment, and it also helps move the queue line faster. If cars are waiting to make a left-hand turn out on Green Bay Road, that queue line is starting to build up on the site. This way, there's nothing preventing the vehicles to move out into the alley, so that queue line can move faster.
So in your opinion, it's better to have people trying to make that bad left-hand turn off of Green Bay Road into the site than have people trying to make the left out of the site?
Yes, and I can speak a little bit more detail about the, that left-hand churn. Uh, Alex Garby with HLR, our traffic engineering consultant is here, and they did the capacity analysis on Green Bay Road.
Hi, yes, Alex Garby with, uh, HLR out of Elgin, um, we did the traffic study for the site. Um, we did look at a capacity analysis of the driveway, um, not a whole lot of volume going into the site, obviously, but, uh, for what it's worth, our analysis showed, for the northbound left, no queue at all. We assume, and that's assuming all twenty students in the max class size, each arrives at the site in their own vehicle, and half of them come from the south and half from the north, so that'd be ten left turns in.
And it wasn't, you didn't think that was an issue?
At four and six o'clock?
I, yeah.
Four and six o'clock on Green Bay, you don't think that's an issue?
I have observed it, I...
You live in Elgin, right?
Yes.
Okay.
A little skeptical, but, um, yeah, the...
But you were, you did the, the testing at five o'clock, because five o'clock it is, it's a parking lot in Green Bay, you can't even go...
Yeah, the peak hour.
Anyway, so I, my gut feeling is people are going to start coming down the alley, they're going to drop their kids in the back, they're going to drop them everywhere.
Is there, you know, was there any thought that maybe reaching out to Jewel, because they own that lot that barely gets used, that's immediately adjacent, to be able to go in there and...
That was a recommendation of, of the report, is that they reach out to Jewel and try to obtain, uh, permission to use ten parking spaces in that lot.
So...
And what was the result of that?
Result is, we are still in discussion to figure out what the financial burden would be. Uh, Jewel is concerned about the capacity of their lot, but based on the study and our own personal investigation, that lot does not fill up.
It does not, yeah.
Uh, I have a friend that works there, and it's, it's also, uh, you know, we're in a position where it feels like they'd be open to it, but we wanted to see if we could propose alternative solutions, uh, before they...
So let me touch on the parking part of this, so, uh, our, our code is requiring you to have a certain number of parking spaces. Uh, at your existing facility, are people parking and walking their kids in? Are people parking and staying for the time that the kids are in the classes? I mean, what's the experience that you're having right now?
So at our current facility, in our current studio at Lincoln Park, uh, we have zero designated spots, uh, and an average of seventeen kids per class, and we've had no issues to date, uh, and there's much less public parking available.
Right.
But are most of your people driving there, or are they walking?
So most of them drive, and we've identified, similar to what we've proposed in this policy, we've identified lots, um, that they can park at, so that if they do want to stay, they park in the lots and, uh, walk their child in, then they explore the area for a while, take a break, have a coffee, um...
We've seen about sixty percent drive, and because we have so many families from, uh, outside neighborhoods that come into Lincoln Park, similar to how we expect outside neighborhoods such as Highland Park, Deerfield Lake Forest, to come into Willmet, uh, parents aren't going to drop their kids off and then go back home, you know, they're going to, they're going to take their car, they're going to go shop somewhere, and then they're going to come back and pick up their child, they're not looking for parking typically. Uh, we encourage the parents to, to go exercise, at CrossFit, we'll encourage them to go shopping, at Jewel, to pick up their groceries during the seventy-five minutes, it's the perfect time to, to get your groceries or get a workout in.
And that's exactly what happens in Lincoln Park, so families coming in for the weekend classes especially, they'll say, you know, "I'm going to drop my kid off and go to the Mariano's, here we have a Jewel, to go do my weekly shopping," and then they come back and, um, pick up their kid, and...
So it, during your presentation, I want to jump back to the six parking spaces in the back, you'd say the, what'd you call them, the...
So trials.
Trial.
We offer free trials, just for parents and kids to test out, um, you know, our, our studio experience and see whether or not it's a good fit, um, because it's hard to really grasp...
So that's why you have to have some parking.
Yeah, we, we are a new program and new product in the education market, so, um, we find a lot of families really need to experience it to understand it and see whether or not their child is going to be a good fit.
Okay. Where, where's your staff going to park?
So similar thing to Lincoln Park, um, we're going to ask them to arrive thirty minutes beforehand at studio, um, and we're going to recommend that they park in one of the village lots, um, uh, or take the Metro.
And they'll be incentivized to take public transportation.
Times on Saturdays and Sundays are really not very conducive to...
Yeah, but there's more parking available in the public lots on Saturdays and Sundays.
Well, that's true, except you can hike a little bit, or you can park on the street and then...
Yeah, and cross green the road.
Nobody can get around somebody who wants to turn left into the, into the...
Right. All right, um, questions, comments, anymore?
Yes, I, I have a question for, regarding the traffic study, I don't know where to address it, but there's currently parking all across the front of that space in the Bone and Joint, right?
Um, so what I noticed today was that between the driveway, uh, of Illinois Bone and Joint, and the beginning of the right turn lane to turn right onto Linden, southbound, there's only two spaces. So you'd need to be, uh, north of Illinois Bone and Joint to take advantage of any street parking that's on the west side of Green Bay Road.
When I was there, there was a, a big truck right in front of the building, so I couldn't tell if it was a parking space or not, but it's not a parking space in front?
No, there's, so if you come...
So the queuing could be part, partially there?
Um, yeah, but, so, here's, here's the way that I was looking at this, so you've got two spaces that are immediately in front of the building, Illinois Bone and Joint, um, uh, driveway kind of cuts off anything beyond that, because you've got the right turn lane for Linden, it's really an extended right turn lane.
Okay.
But if, what I was looking at the queuing and why I didn't think the queuing would be too much of a problem, I do agree with Mr. Coling on the left turn from northbound traffic, but the building itself is, uh, over a hundred feet in depth. Um, and if a car is twelve feet, I mean, let's, you're going to, eight cars can queue in that alley space along the side of the building, and then as they make that turn, you know, you've got a car or two in the little drop-off area.
So you don't think they'll end up queuing on the street at all?
I, I really don't think they're going to end up queuing on the street, I think the bigger problem is just the, the knuckleheads that want to make a left turn because they don't want to follow direction. That's, I, that's, that's my personal opinion on it.
And, yeah, we think there's three spaces actually in front of the Illinois Bone and Joint, and then in front of, um, the applicant's property, uh, it's, uh, striped as no parking, it's not signed as no parking, so in the event that someone was having difficulty turning into the driveway, there is enough, there's adequate space to, you kind of pull over and wait for, you know, whether it's a pedestrian or a car that's having trouble getting into the line, or, so there is, there is some additional space there.
Okay.
Did you say cars are eight feet long, did I hear you right?
Twelve.
No, twelve. Twelve. I said 12, so you can stack about eight.
His car, he has 12.
I'm sorry, Mr. Boat. What do you got? We got that Escalade? Sorry, we don't press.
The Ford F-150. Extended bed.
What has been the, your discussions with Jewel? It seems to me that it's very reasonable. That, that parking lot north of Linden
They do sound open to it, but to get to the decision-makers, it's taken some time. So they're presenting a few different options to the executives to figure out if they're open to it. Some of the concerns that they voiced were the capacity and I assured them, based on our limited schedule, that we could have some clear signage and even limit that parking. They, they brought up outlier situations about somebody parking there for five hours. I don't know many people that wanna spend five hours at Jewel. But that being said, you know, we are willing to consider different options to work with them and we just have to figure out if the cost makes sense. Some, some data points have shown us that previous, previously listed prices for the spots would be an undue financial burden, making this
Oh, really? This is, so they've talked?
We've, we've received data points from our broker. That being said, we did present them with, you know, an initial offer and we're waiting to hear back.
It would seem to me that it would benefit them because you have these parents who are going to do something with the 75 minutes and, and they might even
Exactly. I mean, if, if the parking is reserved for Jewel and this Jewel is, you know, it's an interesting circumstance because their parking lot is actually split. So most people don't wanna cross the street once they've gotten their groceries. So most people that are parking there are parking there if they're doing just a quick pickup or they've just got burdened with parking.
And as I understand it, the, the employees of Jewel, parking is south of the store. A lot of it is south, right? Some of it is north.
I think you're, yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah, believe so.
I'm not aware where the, the staff parks.
It doesn't sound like they, when I, from my conversations, it doesn't sound like they park in that lot.
I don't know of any customers that ever parked
Right.
Of Linden to shop at Jewel.
I've seen it, overflow parking there only on extremely busy days.
Christmas, holidays.
Right, your holidays. But that's what, four days a year?
In one way, I mean, we could, we could offer everybody to go inside and buy a pack of gum or a granola bar and come back out and then they had the parking for a very good price. Perhaps we even subsidize that.
So, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, I think it's a great concept, first of all. We haven't talked about that portion. We kinda focused right on the parking. And I'm not sure how we deal with this, as long as they make the commitment that they're not gonna impact the parking and they're just gonna have to, almost like Loyola Academy, you'll have to revisit it with staff if there's an issue and to get it resolved. I think would be the way to approach it.
Well, also, the, the class hours, is there any? This is a new location. Is there any plans to add the class load?
This is an after-school thing, I assume.
Right, after-school, summer camps, events. So this is our standard schedule right here. There is a little bit of flexibility, as we said, about the staggering.
As we grow, currently we're offering after-school programs at four o'clock and six o'clock. And then on the weekends, on Saturdays, we have a 10, 12, and two on Saturdays. We would consider adding a 4:00 PM and a 6:00 PM if the demand is there. Right now, we haven't opened that up, you know, a year into operations in Lincoln Park. We haven't had the need to do that, but we've planned for it if need be. Same thing on Sundays. We have a 12 o'clock and a 2:00 o'clock right now. But if, if we find that there is demand from our parents, then we would be open to considering a 10:00 AM, a 4:00 PM, and a 6:00 PM.
Summertime when kids aren't in school, would you consider doing it earlier in the day?
So during the summertime, we offer camps from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And they're usually week-long camps because parents go from after-school classes to day camps because there's no school. So we offer the day camp and then we find that a lot of families do the 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM and then add on a, a class after to make it extended days so they can go to work and not worry about their child.
So this would be, this, this schedule is an in-school schedule?
Yes, that's during, exactly, that's during the school year. During the summer, it turns into 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, but they're dropped off.
So less cars?
Yeah, less cars. First of all, the, the camps are smaller.
So the, the total, the total scheduled classes gets reduced? Is that what you're saying?
During the summer.
During the summer.
The after-school classes are exactly the same because, but, and actually, we offer day camps as well. So we have more students coming in and out during the, if you consider the entire day.
So Monday through Friday, in the summertime, you would be nine to three blocked?
Addition to the four or the six.
What you see on it.
Yes.
You'd have an extra six hours a day during the week.
But the drop-off pickup is nine o'clock in the morning? And then really where it gets, maybe a little more congested is drop-off pickup at that four o'clock, four o'clock spot when some kids are leaving camp, some kids are additionally coming for more classes.
I think, you know, this, when the parents are driving their kids like this, you learn the system and you learn what works. And you realize, you know, there is gonna be traffic and gotta leave 10 minutes earlier.
I think, you know, a good example of that is you look at the schools that we've had to deal with as, you know, St. Francis, Loyola, you know, we're gonna have the, the group that's using the church on Wilmette Avenue come back to us because we asked them to do a, a traffic study, a parking study, whatever. I think it's, it's training, you know, the training, the parents. Some of it, they realize this is easier than the other way, but also, hey, this is how we need you to do it. And so it, it just takes a little time to get people accustomed.
The difference here is those are kind of in more side streets. This is, this is one of the busiest streets in, in Wilmette, Lake Street, Green Bay, Sheridan Road.
Yep.
I mean, I think it's a different
A different beast. One of my additional concerns was having CrossFit there. I know part of, or I feel like I know, I don't know, but part of CrossFit and they can speak to it when we give them the opportunity. But they do use that parking lot a little bit for classes when the weather's better. You know, people are running, you know, doing laps around the block and stuff. My only concern would be is if, if there's ever a conflict with people driving through there and out the alley as the classes are going on, you know, we've got cars and pedestrians then. I'd hate to
So we've included, we've had the conversation with CrossFit and we're going to share ours with them and let them know when we're going to expect the cars coming in. As a part of the employee policy and checklist, we've added that they, before the queue starts, they have to go outside, make sure that the lot is clear and ready for the queue and loading and unloading of students.
Okay.
I'm curious also, I think, so does CrossFit have a certain number of spots here? Do they tend to use these spots that would then become designated for this?
They've designated, or they're allotted, what, six spots? Is that right, CrossFit?
That's what I understood.
We under, or Lisa says she understands that they're designated six of the spots.
The, the six spots are located right above the drop, the loading zone on the plan shown.
They are located in this area right here, yep. As opposed to across from CrossFit's building, they're to the east of CrossFit's building.
So actually, this might be a question for CrossFit because if
We have a landlord, right?
Right, so are you the landlord?
Yes, I'm the
Okay.
Robert Hollander. I live in Wilmette and I'm very proud to own this building and I'm proud to be here today. I've got a diagram of the parking and each, the CrossFit and the Codeverse will each have designated spaces. Cause they had it a little backwards. These are for the Codeverse, which is here. These four spots and then these two spots here. So these six and this whole highlighted area here is for the CrossFit.
So
Directly across from their building.
So this leads to an additional question about parking now. So you have 12 outdoor spaces. You're designating six of them to CrossFit and six of them to Codeverse, right?
There's 15 spaces, I guess. My, minus two, so 13. Yeah, seven and, and six.
Seven and six, so there's 13 spaces. So all the outdoor parkings being designated to the two tenants that are occupying the building, but your second floor is still vacant, right?
No, I, I pulled a permit last year and I invested heavily, remodeled that apartment and those people use this garage here.
So it's an apartment up there?
Yes.
The whole second floor is one apartment?
Yes, sir.
And they are designated, the two garage spaces. Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep.
That was my concern, that we still have commercial coming in on the second floor.
So that, yeah, but these will, these will be designated and, and signage will be put up.
Yeah. For, okay.
In the lease as such.
Okay.
So when you look at your drawing versus this drawing, it looks like that loading zone is smaller than it appears on here. Is that? Which one would you say is more accurate?
Well, I think that, I think that the loading zone kinda covers where the tree is in his, his drawing.
Yeah, it's about, it looks the same to me. It just
Well, it looks to me like those parking spaces come to the middle of the building, whereas it looks like the loading zone goes further. And that's why I was just curious which drawing was more accurate.
I'm, I don't understand.
I think, I think the difference
I know, you have the, you have the driveway.
That the, on his drawing, it, it's showing the one that, the drawing that was just up there, the landlord's drawing encompasses the handicap space. That one shows just the six spaces that are beyond the handicap. So the handicap goes with
Code.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I think that's a discrepancy, John.
Okay.
Do you want me to leave this up?
Yeah, for one more second.
Sure.
So the building, that, the eastern edge of the building where CrossFit is, is at the edge of the highlighting or is there a space next to that building? Do you see where?
It's right on the building.
It's right on the edge of the building? Okay, so if we come down that building, so you've got two spaces, so one, two. So right here, so there's one, two, three, four spaces, is that right? One, two, three, four spaces, okay. So Mr. Kohling, I mean, if you're, if you're looking at this, these four spaces here, even with the edge of the building, go to CrossFit and the two then, next, the, the handicap and the one next to it, go over this way?
I know, well, I, I got that. It just looks to me like the loading zone is, is bigger on here than it is on there. So I was just wondering which one was more accurate for rendition, that's all. Yeah, I don't know.
They've got the loading zone, this highlighted area is actually more, that's the drive as you're going through.
Yeah.
So we included some of the driveway in the loading zone and we're only going to be loading and unloading one car at a time. So we based that drawing off of the, the actual lot. And it might look a little larger, but we've actually gone from the wall and the edge of each parking space and the building itself and kind of made it look like that. We just wanted to clearly identify. We don't know the exact measurement of the loading of the zone just yet, but we know we want it to be there and to accommodate one car at a time to ensure that, you know, each kid is taken in safely and to their cars.
There is quite a bit of room here between these, these spots and, and here. There's a lot of space here. What you have highlighted. In this area.
How many employees will there be at any one time? Sorry.
So our student-to-teacher ratio is one to eight. So it depends on the number of students that come to class. We staff accordingly. We expect to have at least three managers, studio manager, two assistant managers who aren't instructors to at every session. And then outside of that, we expect about three to five, on, on a really busy day, five. That's typically, you know, two to three.
So they will arrive at three o'clock in the afternoon?
They're gonna arrive 30 minutes before class at the studio after having parked their cars.
After having what?
After having parked their car or taken the metro. That's what they do right now at Lincoln Park. And that's also a part of the policy, arrive 30 minutes before.
I have a question. I'm curious as how it's gonna work with CrossFit. Are you gonna have, do you have classes outside? Do you bring equipment out, the battle ropes, you know? And, and then how would it work if you do have a class outside and there's equipment outside? You know, you're doing ball slams and whatever else and then
Sure.
A car comes through?
Yeah, so let me, let me just kinda, so I'm Steve Woodall, so owner of CrossFit, so thanks for having me. So yeah, so hopefully I can just kinda clear it up so you guys know exactly what we do. So probably like 98, 99% of the stuff that we do at CrossFit is all inside the walls of our building, you know? So we will do, you know, like you were saying, like when the weather's nice, we're gonna do some running. We've got, basically how we do it is we've got like designated markers through the back neighborhood. So we've got like a quarter mile, half mile, mile, you know? And then so, so really when we do our running, like people will be going through the parking lot. I mean, they're gonna be in there for maybe like 10 seconds, you know? And it's not like you're gonna be, like, so our classes are an hour long. And, and when you come in, you know, only a very small portion of that hour is actually gonna be like the cardiovascular part where you're actually gonna be running or doing anything like that. So, yeah, so just to answer your question, so there's no, so there's no weightlifting, there's no medicine balls, kettlebells, nothing of that nature kinda goes into the parking lot. So then, you know, everybody at the gym, they're all residents in Wilmette. Most, a lot of people live right behind the building, you know, in the neighborhoods. Everybody's very, you know, professional, respectful. Everybody's got kids. I'm sure probably, you know, most of my guys have got, you know, one to five kids. I'm sure a lot of them will probably wanna go, you know, to this place. So, yeah, so I'm, I'm very supportive of it. I think it's, you know, an awesome business and
And you don't feel there's gonna be a conflict with the way that you use the lot currently and the way that they're gonna need to use it?
I don't think so. I think, like Rob had said, like, I think as long as we put up like specific signage of like, hey, this is CrossFit's parking, this is their parking, you know? And then I've, I've got a, a good, you know, kinda email blast system. So like anything that I need to tell my athletes, you know, I can just shoot it out. Like, hey, you know, these guys aren't, you're not allowed to park over here, you know? They're all very respectful adults and they'll, you know, they'll comply to, you know, whatever kind of rules these guys are wanting to set up. I think it'd be good. And then, so their class schedule, so like the majority of my business is done like early in the morning. You know, like my busiest class is at 5:00 AM, you know? So I've got a ton of people, 5:00 AM, 6:00, 7:00, 9:30. My evening classes are generally the slowest time. So 4:30, sometimes it'll get a little busier. But basically like the times that they're talking about is 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. So I feel like as long as, you know, as, as long as we kinda, you know, we work together as far as scheduling goes, I feel like it'll be pretty simple to keep traffic going in and out, keep everybody safe. I mean, I've got a six-year-old too, so I'm very, you know, like I'm all about safety for the kids, so
How do these times work with your busy schedule?
Sure, yeah.
Your peak, peak schedule?
Sure, yeah. So kinda like I was just saying, so like, so basically like 5:00, 6:00, 7:00 AM are the busiest classes I have. I do have classes at 4:30, 5:30, and 6:30, but those ones are not as busy. And as, as long as we had that proper signage out there, we're like, hey, like this is where you're allowed to park, then I think it would be fine.
So who, who's uses your parking? Your customers or do they park somewhere else?
Customers, yeah. And then I've got one, there's one parking spot that I have. It's back. So I can show you. Yeah, you can see my fingers. So yeah, so CrossFit's right here. And then so basically there's like my garbage van is back here and then in this area back here, there's enough room for one or two vehicles and that's generally where I park and there, where my coaches park if I'm not there.
Currently, how many spots are, are they all filled up, the, the six or so that you've got?
Oh, yeah, for sure, for sure. Yeah. Yeah, they're all filled up. And then I just tell people like if they're filled up, just park on Green Bay, you know, and
Since it's been, that building's been vacant for a couple of years, have they been using the excess parking?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, but like I said, I feel like as long as we put up some good signs there, I think it'll be pretty straightforward and I think everybody will, will, will be okay.
Any other questions for our applicant?
I just have a, I know we're zoning, but our architectural one, are there two exits to, from the basement? Are there not? Okay. I think, yeah, I'd have to look at the code. Most of the international billing code Most of the international building code requires, I believe that it was over twelve hundred square feet, you were required to have two exits.
Are you talking about their building now, the-
Yeah, their building. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay, it's okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, not your, not your building, the basement for the-
The basement is used as storage.
No, I'm saying in the code, code verse one. Oh, okay. Chairman Duffy? Well, there shows, the lower level shows a lounge area, meeting room.
So, after doing some research into code, we realized that we don't comply with the standards, so we're actually not going to use the basement at all, and we're giving it back to the landlord to use as storage.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're gonna just keep everything on the first level.
Good question.
Yeah. Okay. And then the, the other point, just to point out, is, you know, the, that you have within your studio and the, and the black hole, that whole area, really only has one exit from that space, you're gonna need a second one.
For the, the black hole, it's just a little-
Well, no, for the whole studio area. Right now, there's only really one door unless you go through the cubbies.
So there are two exits right there? One in the front, and that will be the pedestrian entrance and the front one?
With, when you're within the space, when you're within the studio room and the computer lab and that whole area.
There are two entrances, so there's, one will be the cubbies, which is right here, and there's a second here.
Okay, I think, I'm just saying, you'll have to check it for code. I believe those are too close.
Okay.
From an architectural code review point, that they're too close. You might have to change the directions, but you may have to have one further up towards where it says computer lab. We're just zoning, but just something to watch out for.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our applicant? No, I'm gonna see if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak either for or against this case. Please come on up. Come on, you guys have a seat. Hi, welcome, thanks for sticking around.
Yeah, no problem. Sally Cummings, 510 Park Avenue, and I had an opportunity to talk to Chris with another neighbor and completely support the business. I am very concerned about the traffic and also the compliance of CrossFit. There are parking signs up now that they do not comply with. They're constantly running in the alley in groups of people. They do activities in the middle of their parking lot and in the parking spaces. They're a completely disruptive neighbor to us. And so, in regards to the traffic and the traffic studies, I would encourage that we look at it again. I'm very concerned about it.
Where are you located? You're just to the west?
Right behind it.
To the west, okay.
And I have another neighbor here and other neighbors that are also opposed, I couldn't make it. But, anyone who lives on that, on that block, it's like a total, it's, we're totally abused by traffic. CrossFit runners, CrossFit customers. Illinois bone and joint used to be a problem. We worked really closely with them, and they have complied, and they're a really good neighbor. CrossFit is not a good neighbor. I think this business and bringing children into the, to the neighborhood and improving the health of the alley is something that I would highly, highly support. But I don't see how they can do it together.
Okay.
In the alley.
And when you say improve the health of the alley, is it Graham now, and-
Yeah, I mean, I think that they're, what they're having a one-way off of Green Bay Road and making it, you know, a healthy environment as far as, you know, the cars and the traffic and the cut-through. I think if you talk to the police department or the sergeant, CrossFit has complaints on a regular basis.
But this will be better 'cause you feel it's just organized.
Yes. Yes. But they don't, they don't comply, they don't listen. They say they will, they don't, they, they do it for a short period of time, and then they go right back to the same activities. And they will be using all of that parking space. I don't see how people can cross through, I work from home, so I'm there all day, they have classes all day long.
So, is it vehicular traffic that CrossFit that you're concerned about, or, or just people jumping, jumping up and down?
No, it's runners, it's vehicles, it's Illinois bone and joint, and those customers are coming through that alley as well. You have people cutting through the alley. You know, it's, there's, there's a lot of issues on that one corner. I'm, you know, I, I see it all day long, I'm scared to death every day that someone's gonna get hit.
Let's separate-
Or someone's gonna, something's gonna happen in the alley.
Let's just, I, I need to separate the two, so-
Right.
Let's separate CrossFit. That's not really part of the, the application tonight. So, if we're, if you were just looking at code verse, is, is that, the way the traffic study was presented, traffic patterns, what they're planning on doing, CrossFit aside, i- is that something you would be in support of, or you would be against? Based on what-
During my conversation with Chris, and it was another neighbor and I, that I, we felt encouraged that they would have employees actually, you know, taking children into the site, or, you know, youth into the site, that I think they even said taking them in and out of the car, a completely respectful way of doing business. I think if it was just that, I would support that, yes.
Okay. All right, okay. Any other questions?
But you're saying the combination of CrossFit activity and cars, and the bone and joint cars coming down that alley, there is-
High concern.
High usage now, which will only be higher usage.
Yeah, I mean, I worry about it all day long, I see it all day long, sometimes I can't get out of my own parking spot. They, there's no parking. We've had to use our own no parking signs to like, say, please don't park here, and they still park there. And they actually, we had Officer Parisi came, like, a week ago, and one of the CrossFit people flat-out lied to her and said, oh, I've got permission to park here. No, you don't, you don't have permission to park here. I mean, we may give permission to other people, but, you know, I mean, like, it just, it's a total abuse of, of the area. And people use it as a cut-through. That would be the only other real concern that I have, is people know that they can speed through there and get onto Green Bay Road, and they miss the light at Linden, as you were referencing, and they miss the lights sometimes at Green Bay, depending on which way they're going.
Would it help if it was a one-way? One-way or the other?
I don't think that would help either, because then I would be concerned you'd get bottlenecked. I like that one-way coming through from Green Bay Road. I mean, that seems reasonable, then I can pull out of my parking spot, and, you know, I know what to expect. I'm, I'm lucky because I know about the pedestrian traffic, I know about the running traffic, I know about the car traffic. I have another neighbor who has a garage, I don't even know how she pulls out. You know what I mean, out of her garage, so, but knowing that would make it reasonable, for sure.
But I, I heard you would support code verse as the plan submitted and the information you, you heard this evening. You'd be okay with code verse?
Code verse?
I think you have to look at it as, as part of the cumulative decreased uses of the alley, which I think is what you're saying, is the problem. Not, not the way that their traffic pattern is set up, but it's just gonna add more traffic to what's already happening.
I'm, I think we can cover that in the discussion, because there are issues when you have the commercial buildings, properties, businesses on one side of an alley and residential on the other, all the way up and down Green Bay, you have issues like this. And clearly, if you go further north, where you have the, the Walgreens, there's a lot of traffic that goes through the alley. And that's just part of the, the situation. Because you have commercial on one side and residential on the other, and to some degree, that can't be totally eliminated. Those, those conflicts that are natural.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not saying that I expect it to be completely eliminated. However, when you have people running out of an alley, and I don't mean like, you know, running, jogging, you know, you know, exercise, I mean, they're darting out of the alley, and people are coming out, and then these people, code verse clients are gonna be coming in. I, they, I don't see how they can coexist in that one parking lot, but I don't know if that's something I should even be bringing up.
No, it's all right, that's what we're looking at. Thank you. All right, any other questions? No. Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else that wants to speak either for or against? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vicki Kay, where I live at 1126 Linden. I think the idea for this business is wonderful. I think there's a big issue with the condition of the alley. The alley by Walgreens is in great shape, it's got a good surface. This is bumpy, and then when people park where they're not supposed to. One day I was walking my dogs down the alley, it's way north, the garbage truck could not get through because somebody was double parked. So the guy from, from Advanced Disposal had to take a cart out and go down the alley to pick up stuff. And it's just, the, the alley itself is in such bad condition. I mean, I wouldn't wanna walk there at night, well, 'cause other things go on there, but I wouldn't wanna walk there at night because the surface, you could break an ankle. And maybe if the alley were widened and the parking were better, but it's just, and again, the CrossFit is, is, I, I have a curb-cut driveway on Linden, and sometimes I don't know how many runners are coming now, will ever be able to get out of my driveway. So, and I have a backup camera and everything, but it's, it's, there are problems, and I understand when you live, we share a commercial alley, and I find the alley by Walgreens is so much better than our alley is. Because again, you get the cut-through, you get, and then the, the condition, the condition of the alley is really, really bad. And they, they, they put the asphalt patches down, and it just doesn't do it. But, I mean, the idea of this kind of business, I'm so for it, and I think it's, it's a great idea.
The village engineer is sitting right there, and he's listening.
Have you been down, have you walked down our alley lately? I'm sorry. It's, it's bad, and it's bumpy, and it's, you know, and it's, you know, it, it, they try to fix it, but I know the alley on, that goes south of Prairie, that got repaved, I don't know, five years ago or so, it's beautiful. But this one is like, oh, you know, you have to wear flats or gym shoes, because otherwise you're gonna break something, so. But, but, one day, one day, the, the garbage truck could not get through because of the double parking. The people were just illegally parking along the alley, and because the wire goes across, it was too, the wire was too low for the garbage truck. And so he had to back up, and then he, he picked up the other garbage, you know, with a, with a handcart. But, so it's, it's, you know, there are problems, and I, you know, you pay for the convenience of living near the village center. I totally get it. But sometimes things can be better than they are. So, but, but the alley, it, it's a really poor alley. Sorry.
All right, any other questions for our-
Just, I guess, if you, if the alley was improved, do you think things would be worked out?
And maybe there are areas to widen it a little bit or something, but it's just that people will illegally park there. And, you know, they think, oh, you know, if I get away with it, it's fine, you know. It seems to be a really attitude that's going on in this country now, but if I can get away with it, everything's okay. But, you know, sometimes it's not okay. And when utilities can't get through, and the garbage, when Advance can't get through the alley, because somebody's parked there and he has to back up because he can't clear the wire. So, it's just, you know, just little things, but, you know, the convenience, you pay for the convenience of living near the village center, but sometimes things can be made a little bit better. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the case? I see no one, okay, you, as the applicant, Chris, you guys can come up and address the concerns that these residents have raised.
Yeah, and we, we respect and appreciate all the concerns that everyone voiced. You know, we wanna be a good neighbor to everybody, both residential and commercial. Sally and fellow neighbors, they brought up some real concerns, and we believe that in dealing with kids, you have the highest standard of care. And so, we think that, you know, in the aggregate, and working with someone like Steve, Steve's a very nice guy, and he's showed a willingness to work with us, he has a child himself, he understands that standard of care. We think that, you know, our business, taking this property and implementing an organized structure and working with Steve, and working with the village, and working with you, we can, you know, create some added benefit, add some structure, and actually help resolve some of these pre-existing conditions, 'cause a lot of these concerns are independent of what we're proposing here. But by adding structure and signage and having staff in a parking lot that doesn't have staff, then we can help alleviate people parking in the wrong places, working out where they're not supposed to be working out. And, you know, if, if the village chooses to improve the alley, that, that's great, but we think that a lot of what we're proposing here as a solution actually, you know, not only works for us, but will help the aggregate and pre-existing conditions that, you know, are concerns today.
All right. Do we have any more questions?
I have a question for, so we'll, Green Bay Road used to be two lanes, and it got narrowed to one lane at one point in time, I don't know, it was ten, fifteen years ago. Do you have any recollection when that was?
I think it was a little bit longer than that.
Longer than that, okay. All right, I was just curious if you knew the timeframe when that occurred?
I don't.
Okay, thanks.
But that was to accommodate parking? Is that why it got, no?
It's before my time, I'm not sure.
Okay, maybe try to slow things down.
'Cause you come from Evanston with the two lanes into Womack with the one lane, yeah, you do have parking on the east side-
Right.
And west side, which maybe-
Maybe it's to slow traffic down, maybe through town, to make it one lane, and-
Really slow traffic.
They succeeded, yeah. All right, do we have any other questions for our applicant, or any other member?
The site plan review committee-
Yeah.
Made some recommendations, would you be willing to, both of the comments?
So here's-
You know them, you know what they are?
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you address the ones that you specifically want them to talk about? Do you want all of them? Because some of them are just, you know-
Have, have you seen these?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
The site plan review committee made some recommendations.
The six recommendations-
Correct, right.
So out of those six, we're able to fully commit to items three through six.
Right.
Illinois bone and joint, unfortunately, item number two, they are not willing to rezone, or approve rezoning for a loading zone, and Juul is a question mark right now, based on historical data points.
It's item one, right.
Item one, correct. Based on a historical data point, it would be an undue burden on our finances and business, we wouldn't be able to exist. But they have showed a willingness to work with us, so we hope that we'll be able to make that work. That being said, it's not, it's not a firm yes today, so we were hoping to propose the alternatives of having staff present. So there are a couple of residents that have also offered to potentially lease their parking spaces to us. Two residents have two spaces. Once again, these aren't firm commitments in writing, but it does provide additional parking for us.
So, as far as Mr. Schneider's question, so you've been able to obtain a commitment from CrossFit that the parking area will not be used to host exercise during the times when Cross, I mean, see, code verse is in session. You've presented to us a solution to ensure that the spaces are clearly defined, delineated between which are for code verse and which are for CrossFit, and that you're gonna commit to having staff being present in the parking area during pickup and drop-off periods. You've given us the information on that as well, provide a clear indication for proper direction, you've, for traffic flow, you've given us that as well. So those are the four, three, four, five, and six that you're able to comply with.
As techie as we are, we actually made posters, and I think that's the legal hat I like to put on occasionally as exhibits, I don't know. I feel like since we printed them, we might as well show them.
And then, we have ten solutions?
Ten solutions, because we weren't able to make firm commitments on the first two. But, you know, with clear signage, designated entrances for pedestrian versus motor vehicle, car line staff, we have, we, we hire the best. Traffic policy, which you have in hand, clear communication, we have newsletters, we have staff that will communicate it onsite, emails. The staff themselves will communicate it in the car line, the incentive program, both for our parents as well as our employees to take public transportation and not drive, staggered schedules, we have, you know, some flexibility, we showed you some of the staggering we can do. We're also happy to work with Steve to stagger our schedules with CrossFit within reason. Speed bump recommendation, we threw that out there, because we heard some concerns about speeding through the alley. Other village parking, you know, we, we're going to recommend that parents park in Juul's parking lot, that they go buy their groceries, that they go in town, we're happy to act as a community partner, especially for those traveling from out of town, and highlight what those spaces are and communicate it very clearly. And then also the other potential parking leases with some, some neighbors that have been very willing for us to enter the neighborhood and have potentially, you know, offered to, to commit their parking spots if we can reach an agreement.
So-
So off-site parking, we take in the, the parking that you recommend on the community development site, and we're going to steer our members and staff and everyone to those, and, and keep them out of the residential areas.
Good. Do we have any other questions for our applicant right now? Nobody? All right, wanna make sure I've got everything you wanna share with us before I close the evidence in the case?
We also wanna install like a ten-foot fence, that's gonna be all right with you guys?
Do you wanna put it on top of a retaining wall? All right. I'm gonna close the evidence of the case, thank you guys all. I'm gonna ask if there's a board member who'd like to make a motion on this. All right, Mr. Schneider, thank you very much.
Hang on a second. I move to recommend for case number 2018-Z-23, move to recommend granting a request for special use for an OCH Studio code verse at 517 Green Bay Road, in accordance with the plan submitted. The zoning board, I think the use goes with the use-
Will run with the use, correct, yeah.
With the use.
Do I have a second on this?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Uh, Mr. Schneider, your motion.
My general view of, there's always a con, potential conflict, uh, issues between parking, circulation, uh, and density, uh, traffic. And I, I, I come down on this use will bring people to the village center who will spend some time here. There is an amazing amount of resilience amongst users. They adapt to situations. And to insist that everything be just perfect in terms of parking and circulation means that we have these, um, Eden's plazas with parking lots surrounding, uh, retail establishments. I like these kinds of density. There's sometimes maybe tension between different users and, and, and owners. But I think it can be worked out. I think people will adapt. And so I think this is a good use for the village and, um, at this location. I hope that you can work something out with Jewel. Uh, this parking lot is not used. I don't know why they are so resistant. The alley in terms of its condition, right, the village engineer has heard you and I'm sure it's somewhere on their docket, Public Works Department.
Somewhere.
To do something at some point. Uh, so, but, but I, I can support this.
Mr. Cullen.
Um, you know, the, the actual business, I think, is great. And, you know, happy you're, you're looking to bring it to Wilmette. You know, I just think it's the wrong, the wrong place. Um, you know, uh, I drive Wilmette, uh, Green Bay almost every day between five and six. And it's, I, I mean, it's just brutal. Um, and I just, you know, you have those two apartments there. You've got, you know, Illinois bone and joint, you've got Jewel, now you're adding, you know, during peak hours, more traffic. You know, I guess everybody can wait through another couple of lights and another train. And, you know, it just makes you insane driving there. But at any rate, for those reasons and, uh, some of the things the neighbor brought up relating to CrossFit and other traffic and, and the exercise, you know, the runners and, uh, people parking, you know, in the back there, which really isn't directly, um, uh, a direct issue with, with this application. But when you bring more people in and more traffic in, those types of things happen. So you have to say that could happen, you know, with some people coming to Codeverse. And is that really any different than the alley issues we were dealing with with the church not that long ago? And they're going to be coming back. And, you know, I, I, you know, at some point in time, you know, you can only, you know, you can try to put 10 pounds of sand in a five-pound bag, but, you know, you just keep putting more and more cars on Green Bay with, you know, and, and the train creates obviously a lot of issues there. So I, I just think, you know, it's a great thing for the village. I think it's, it's the wrong location and I can't support it.
Okay. Before, before we move forward, I, I want to ask Lisa a question that really kind of, uh, concerns our, our decision here. So, uh, if we approve this as it's presented, we're saying that it's okay with the parking situation and the plan that they've provided us for drop-off pickup. Um, is there a way that we approve this and say that, well, we think that need three more additional spots or, or? Because what, what we're looking at here is, uh, if they have six spots, it's recommended that, that they get 10 more spots. So is there a way that we find a gray area in there? Or is this just no or yes as presented?
If you wanted to, um, make a motion to, like, make a recommendation, like a condition, um, you could do that. The village board can take it or leave it. Um, or if you're, um, you could just leave it to your discussion to say, you know, I think this is good, but I strongly recommend, you know, each individual might come in one way or the other.
Okay.
But there's no parking variation as part of this?
Correct, because, um, it's an existing village building in the village center and so parking requirements are.
So, so there's no, so there's no specific parking requirement, but it's recommended that more parking be, uh, acquired or attained by the applicant?
Some of your comments are going to be obviously forwarded.
To, with.
With, right.
With our.
And it's not uncommon for the village board, when they're granting approval, to make it conditional upon, you know, meeting the recommendations within what can be agreed to.
So if you were going to make it, if you were going to make a condition, what would, what would you make? Well, here, would I, I'm sorry to jump your question, but the reason I brought it up was because, um, I, I, we understand Mr. Cullen's position. We understand, uh, Mr. Schneider's position. But between the four of us, there may be some gray area that if we said, you know, if they could find like four more spots, I could be in favor of this, or if they could find 10 more spots, I could be in favor of this. I just want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity on the board to kind of say where they're comfortable having this work, so that the village board can hear what we have. And maybe if there's a consensus of us, we can make a, um, not a recommendation, what do we call it? A, uh, to the village board that, hey, if, if they find six more spots, whatever it is, that we could all support this. So before we really got into discussion, I wanted to see that everybody understood that there could be a gray area if it was something that they were wavering on their support. So your question to Lisa was?
No, to you.
To me.
You were going to bring up, right, what would your suggestion be?
So that, yeah, I don't, I, I, you know, here's my feeling on, on this is, uh, there's six spaces. I'm a little more concerned about how, uh, this, the parking lot is used by, um, the other tenant. I think, I do believe that it could be worked out, uh, with, you know, good communication between the tenants and their clients. Um, do I think there should be some additional parking? I, I, I kind of think it's okay because I don't think you're really going to have that many parents just hanging around that you need to have, you know, 10 more parking spaces. Um, I, I think that Green Bay Road has enough parking to accommodate the staff, you know, as they park along Green Bay Road. I think that, uh, also that there's sufficient, uh, parking on the other side of the train tracks uh, because that's far enough from the train station that it doesn't get used as much, um, even at peak hours. So I, I kind of think there's enough staff, staff parking kind of within a reasonable distance of the location. I, I just, I, I kind of want to wait and see, unfortunately, how, um, the use of the site really impacts traffic and parking. I'd love to be able to just say, hey, let's, you know, address this in a year or two and see how it goes because I really want to see this business in town. I think it's a great business for, uh, the village. Uh, it's something that, uh, you know, I, I, there's demand for. I've heard of it in the past. I've heard of these classes, these type of, type of businesses in the class. I think it's something that kids would be interested in. And I think it works within, you know, everything that we're trying to achieve with the village center. So that's why, you know, I want to see if, if, does anybody else have, you know?
Well, from a discussion point, you know, I look at the space and I think, you know, we want to fill our spaces in Wilmette. And I look at the spaces that are in that area. And I consider them, I consider retail spaces either as convenience locations or destinations. Illinois bone and, uh, joint is a destination. Jewel is a destination.
CrossFit's a destination.
CrossFit. So I think you have to be careful if we want to fill that space and find something that will be a destination. It can't be a, uh, more of a convenience, um, type of space because you're not having people walk up and down the street.
Right, there's not a lot of real foot traffic.
And then I look at, well, what else could go in that building? And you said, okay, well, if you put in, um, office into that, what does the village have as a requirement for office, do you know?
For office.
You mean like parking?
Yeah, like is it one per?
Wasn't the private bank?
Yeah, there were a couple of banks, I think, there in that location.
In that location, there were banks?
Private bank, private client services or something.
Oh, okay. Because it's 3,800 square feet and by code typically you'd figure 100 square feet per person. So they could really put 38 people in that building, possibly a little less, you know? Um, and then, and then I guess what happens to the parking? Now you've got people there that are all, there all day. So where are all those people going to park? I'm just trying to find, you know, if we don't like this, if we don't think this is the right tenant for this location, what is the right tenant?
Well, I think you're, you know, you're, you're running on a slippery slope with that kind of question because of the way that, you know, users are disappearing of retail space. You know, and, and this, this may have been a true retail space 20 years ago. But the way that, uh, businesses operate today, you, you don't see so many brick and mortar store, retail type locations. Most of these spaces are being occupied by whether it's office, medical or other services. So I, I think, you know, whoever is going to go in there is going to be generating traffic. And if we're going to, if we're going to decide, you know, okay, uh, we're going to dictate what type of user can use this space, we're really limiting then the owner, what he, who he can rent to, and it's a very small pool. And so, you know, is this, you know, it, it's a business we want to see in the village. But is this the optimum space for it? Are there other 4,000 square foot spaces available in the village, near the village center that have parking? I don't believe there are.
Yeah.
So, uh, then it becomes, is Green Bay Road then the impediment for this type of business to be in the village? Uh, you know, is it a hurdle that we can get over? I'm not sure because what, what business then could thrive in that space on Green Bay Road? But it's going to be generating traffic anyway. So.
And where would you, I mean, if it was going to be more of a, a convenience type of tenant, where are they going to park anyway? I mean, there's just.
You're still going to have left turners. Sorry, John, you're still going to have left turners.
And you've got street, right?
Yeah, but I think that, that whatever you put in there might have a higher demand if it was.
Adults, not kids, so you don't have to go through the traffic pattern that you're setting up and what happens.
I don't know. Some of this, we, you know, the village, I think, said we worry about all the parking issues and everything else. And I think you just, you adjust that it's, you know, I understand, uh, Mr. Cullen's point. But, you know, if you plan on going to the Bulls game or something and it's going to be a seven o'clock game, you're leaving it two hours before. I mean, you just plan in. So for this, if you're dropping your kids off, you plan in an extra 15 minutes.
In order to accommodate the way.
To accommodate and make sure you're there on time. You know, we're 10, extra 10 minutes or you.
You know, I, I, I'm going to, I fall back to the school, you know, scenario again, where you're training your, your parents on how to drop off and pick up. They've, they've come before us, you know, and presented us a plan similar to what we see from, you know, the, the school requests. Hey, here's our plan on drop-off pickup. Here's how we, you know, we're going to have a staff member go into the car, walk the kid in. Um, I think that the key here is going to be communicating with CrossFit because they're both using that same space through there. And it is a bit of a safety issue, but as long as there's communication between the two businesses and their clients, it could work. It could work.
Remember from Fourth and Linden, if you go west on Linden at the very end, there was going to be a, um, preschool, daycare.
Yeah, daycare.
And there, there was going to be no parking and they were going to basically have.
They're going to have two spots on.
Now, what did?
They were going to use the drive, the alley to drop off in the, in the alley, yeah.
So did we, we denied that, didn't we? Or, or do we approve it?
We approve it.
Yeah. I believe we approved that.
So I mean, it, well, I, I know you're bringing it up because it is similar. However, the air, I mean, the area itself is totally different.
But they were going to, they were going to double park, I think, right, to drop off the kids and then.
Yeah, there was, I think they were trying to designate some of the spaces as like, you know, 15-minute parking or something like that, yeah. In front of the building.
Right.
Right. But again, to Mike's point, uh, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Boyer's point that, you know, we're talking Linden, which has, you know, 5,000 cars a day as opposed to, you know, Green Bay Road, which has 60,000.
What is CrossFit?
Sometimes it feels worse than two weeks.
Listen, CrossFit have their people park a mile away, run there, and then they have all the other spots.
All right. So can we write that in somehow?
I was, I was opposed to Illinois bone and joint just because it was a reuse, right?
Yeah.
Of, uh, the existing building. Um, it's a redevelopment, right? So a, a new use. Um, this is an existing building, right? It's an existing condition, um, and, and just a new tenant's going in. So.
They're going to have to do enough.
Yeah, would Illinois bone and joint put in significant parking as part of that?
Well, it's still the traffic pattern.
But they were still short parking.
That is the same. I agree.
Traffic patterns, um, the visits, you know, and I, I still love their, their benefit. Oh, yeah, we're going to shop in Wilmette. It's like, when you get an MRI, because your ACL's blowing out, the last thing you want to do is go antiquing, right?
What time does Illinois, sorry to interrupt, but what time does Illinois, uh, joint, bone joint finish up for the day?
That I don't know.
They go later, yeah.
They do go later.
Yeah, they go later, yeah.
I know, because you got, you know, your kids after school coming there as well. I mean, I've taken my daughter there.
Oh, okay.
All right, so it, this is a tough area. It, we, we do have, um, residential, single-family residential right up against commercial. Usually there's a little bit of a buffer. There's, there's apartments, there's R2. You know, that's generally the development pattern of today, right? Fortunately, the development pattern is, it is what it is. So there is a commercial, commercial stretch on a busy street that butts up, right, to residential. And this is a commercial spot. So either we, we restrict the, the owner, which, you know, puts an undue hardship on the owner of the property and limit the, the, uh, the audience that he has for tenant base, right, which is really unfair. Or we, we put in, allow, uh, the variance, um, for a new tenant, which, which seems to be, uh, working as hard as they can on, on taking care of the issues before they arise. So, uh, can you question, uh, do you, does anybody, if they were to vote in favor of this, think that additional parking spaces should be required of this tenant? In addition to the six that they have designated for them?
I, I don't think it will make a difference. I don't think it will make a material difference. Six obviously will make a difference to some degree, but it will not to the traffic pattern, to the demand. Uh, at peak times, I don't think it would, would materially affect, uh, the situation. That's just my opinion and I'm not an expert.
Yeah, I, I tend to lean your way. I mean, you know, there may be even a, you know, wink and a nod. Hey, there's parking right next door, uh, that doesn't get watched that closely, uh, if you run out of spaces. But I don't think that they will, uh, they will. And you've got some parking to the north on Green Bay Road on the west side of the street. And, you know, if that's an overflow. And I still lean towards the, the idea that, you know, you can train people, uh, for the drop-off, pickup, park-in, uh, and stuff. I, I just, I guess I'm, I personally, I'm just leaning to, I think we should give it a chance, you know?
I guess, you know, I'm still not sure if, if the other approach to the traffic wouldn't work. You know, if you, if you came from the other direction. I mean, the, the, the thing that I completely understand.
Is the blind.
That issue.
Yeah.
But, you know, I've designed projects and there's plenty of parking structures out there in the city that has, as soon as anybody gets close, there's a.
Siren and a horn.
A light that goes around, you know?
Watch out, here we come, yeah.
How would that improve it?
Well, because you wouldn't have, you'd only have people exiting, they could only turn right.
If you could, if you could control only right turners out of there.
So then the backup, the backup would end up here and on the street. And the backup wouldn't be affecting Green Bay.
But the only, the only.
Wouldn't mind if I'd be able to get ever into traffic.
You would have to, you'd run into, I think, the same thing that Mr. Cullen brought up was, you know, you got some knucklehead that insists on turning left, uh, you know, from North Brown Green Bay Road to come in. But, you know, even though you've got signs saying right turn only out of this lot, you'd still have that person that says, well, I'm going to turn left and, you know, messes everybody else up.
We've had a lot of accidents in that, just, I mean, I've been there for 10 years.
Plus, if you have two.
A few times and it's, it's fair and line.
If you have two cars coming in opposite directions, you may have traffic flow issues that way. If you have two cars coming in opposite directions, you may have traffic flow issues that way, right?
You are right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it just gets to you, you plan accord, accordingly for the, what time of the day it is.
Communication.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, you adapt. I mean, uh, if, if Codeverse isn't here, they're going to go to Winnetka, you know, then who are we going to find for here? We're trying to fill up our community and make it lively.
You can't say this is the only location in Willmet that's going to fit this use.
Well, the, the other good space was taken by the, um, the, what was that, imaginary gameplay, what, um...
Oh, in the basement?
Escape room, the escape room, yeah.
But you can't find in the Village Center, you can't find four thousand square feet.
With parking.
Yeah.
I just have Sam more concerned with the, the way both users would be. There'd be a lot of in and out, and, because both, neither of them are like eight to five type of businesses, so there's a lot of people coming and going. And so there are a lot of those conflicts that I just have to agree, um, and have concerns similar to Mr. Cullen.
All right. All right, any other comments out of the board? Should we, I mean, let's just go to a vote, or does anybody want to say, hey, I find it better in this gray area?
I'm, uh, I don't need a gray area.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should vote.
Then let's go right to a vote.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
No.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
No.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chairman Duppie?
Chair votes yes as well. So that's going to go as a positive recommendation to the Village Board. They're going to, they're going to read everything. They're going to read what the, um, site review comments are, they're going to review our, our discussion. Something like this, I'll probably get a phone call, um, but you're going to need to come to the meeting on June twelfth. I'm guessing that someone may pull it off just to, uh, discuss it, so that they all can be on the same page. It will go on their consent agenda because it came as a positive recommendation from us, but I have a feeling from how we just discuss things, it will get old and we'll discuss it. Chris, could you come up and sign one of these, uh, letters for me and take the other one with you?
We need to approve, we need to do some stuff.
Hold on a second, I need someone to, why don't you, uh, bring them to your meeting unless Lisa has a use for them?
Move to recommend, I'm sorry, I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and rec, uh, recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number twenty eighteen Z twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Move to approve the meeting minutes for the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. All right, the microphone is open for public comment right now. If anybody wants to make any comments, make, uh, announce a party, announce a block party. Everybody's going to Mr. Cullen's house, I'm just kidding. All right, uh, we're going to adjourn the meeting, thank you, everybody, for coming.
Yeah, there's no parking.
Oh, yeah.